...America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk is not here. I'll explain in a second. Okay, roll call is done, approval of the agenda. We, uh, motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? New business. Uh, first order of business was to swear in our city clerk. We were informed yesterday, uh, actually last night, uh, that she has taken ill and will not be able to take the job. I can read the text, but, um, it sounds like it's gonna be a long-term issue. And she is unable to drive anymore, or at least temporarily, so. She hasn't, uh, tendered resignation, so we still gotta formalize all that. Next item up is, uh, public hearing. And we will go into public hearing at, uh...
About five thirty-five.
Five thirty-five. It will take a minute here. Till the clock catches up with us.
Do you wanna start with the, uh, twenty eighty?
We can, we can briefly talk about the twenty eighty agreement, which I've downed. Twenty eighty agreement, I've been in contact with the sheriff on renewal of that. Um, I had originally set up a meeting with the supervisors for ten o'clock tomorrow morning, uh, as part of their meeting, just to talk about it. Um, the sheriff called me a little bit later and asked if we could move that to one o'clock and we just sit down and discuss it. So it's, it's open to anybody who wants it, can. It's basically to talk about the next iteration of the, of the twenty eighty agreement, uh, to see if we can come up with some cost savings there. Uh, currently it costs us sixty-six thousand dollars a year for that, and so we're just gonna sit down and discuss and see if there's any cost savings that can be made out of that agreement. We have the same agreement as Fonda. In fact, both of us can pay one half of the deputy's salary. Um, there's also discussion and, uh, action and work to write a twenty eighty agreement for the small towns that do not, you do not have one, of course, but currently such as Flubber, Havelock, Verona, Palmer. And so we wanna see if there's a possibility that they could extend this twenty eighty agreement out and include all the small towns. There's a number of things to talk about there, so that's what we plan on doing. So there's really no, no vote around that, I just wanted to let you know where we're at. Um, if you're interested in attending, it'll be in the, uh, the, uh, meeting room, the boardroom, excuse me, over there at the courthouse tomorrow at one o'clock. Uh, let's see, we got like a minute left. Sorry, we have to wait to five thirty-five before we can call a hearing to order. Okay, clock says five thirty-five, so we're calling a public hearing to order. Public hearing is, um, there is a, uh, a lease purchase agreement that the city has entered into with, uh, the right name of the company here. It is, uh, Done With Capital Corporation, and this was for the purchase of all the new water meters that we've had installed. The old ones didn't quite, um, they were falling apart, uh, they needed to be upgraded, they needed to have new electronics put on them, so. We entered into a lease purchase agreement for that. The lease purchase agreement that we entered into, uh, broke the costs out over three years. The total, uh, that we would pay, including interest, was, uh, seventy-two thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. We decided that, um, this contract might fit better into a public, uh, a general bond that we wanna enter into to take care of the trees as well and some other things in town, so. We, um, we basically just have to have the hearing for it, and then we have to adopt, uh, a motion to ratify this agreement, and then that's the end of that business, so. I don't know if there are any questions on the lease purchase agreement. Anybody have anything?
Can I just get the clarification, so these were the water meters Buku way back?
A year ago, this was, you signed the paperwork while you were here. Just for the, the...
We need updates?
Need, well, yeah, but this is for the financing going to the Geo Bond, yeah.
But I'm just trying to get clarification that they were the meters?
Yep.
Of Buku years ago?
Well, just one year.
The ones from Buku years ago were replaced, we put new ones in. And that project took a better part of, well, a couple months. So, anyway, any questions from the council on that? On that particular subject, is there any questions from the people that are attending? If there's no questions, then I'd, um, like to have a motion to, um...
Oh, hey, is that the forty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents?
Yeah, yeah, there, there will be some money that we will pay out of, um, city funds. We will be looking at taking the rest and putting it under that Geo, we will get a better interest rate from the Geo Bond.
So that's the three thou- three hundred and six?
Some part of that. So if there's no other questions, and, uh, public hearing is closed, I'd like to entertain a motion, um, motion to ratify, approve, and authorize water meter lease purchase agreement payable from the net revenues of the municipal water's utility system.
I saw Buku.
Okay, do I have a second? Do you have a second, Aaron? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. I have consulted with our attorney, and we have generated a, uh, language for an ordinance, so I will read it. I want everybody to understand that this is written to fairly treat all people. And if we adopt this, then the only place that we will have these is at the rental place for storage and, and then temporarily for, um, building renovation or putting up a new building. It will be, it will not be allowed to remain on property permanently, except, except at the rental place, so. Let me read this. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Raul by adding a new chapter in one fifty-four of portable storage containers, being enacted by the City Council of Raul, Iowa. Section one, new chapter, the code of ordinances of the City of Raul is here, is amended by adding a new chapter one fifty-four entitled portable storage containers, which is hereby adopted to read as follows. Section, excuse me, um, chapter subsection one fifty-four oh one. Purpose of this chapter is to regulate the placement within the city of certain portable storage containers in order to protect the public health, safety, and welfare and the multi aesthetics of residential and non-residential property in within the City of Raul. Section one fifty-two, one fifty-four oh two. Definition, portable storage containers are defined as a container fabricated for the purpose of transporting greater goods on a truck, railroad, railcar, or ship, including cargo containers, steel cargo containers, shipping containers, freight containers, portable storage containers, cargo boxes, C vans, or storage units that are placed within the city boundaries and used for the storage of clothing, equipment, goods, household or office fixtures, furnishings, construction materials, and merchandise. Section one fifty-four oh three, residential property, the use of portable storage containers on property used for residential purposes is prohibited except in following uses. A, a portable storage container may be used on a residential property when a building permit has been issued for the construction of a residential unit on that parcel. The portable storage container shall be allowed to remain on the residential parcel during the construction only. The portable storage container must be removed within ten days after completion of the construction project or expiration of the building permit. Paragraph B, portable storage containers shall not empty traffic or pedestrians. No portable storage containers shall be located in fire lane, public utility easement, or on public right-of-way, which includes streets, sidewalks, and parking strips. Section one fifty-four oh four, non-residential property, or, excuse me, portable storage containers are prohibited for use on non-residential property except as follows. Portable storage containers may be used for shipping and receiving of merchandise and goods, provided that the storage container does not remain on the property for more than five business days. Portable storage containers may be, this is paragraph B. Portable storage containers may be used for storing merchandise or goods sold or used at a non-residential property on which it is located, provided that the portable storage container is in an area that is not visible from any public street and is not in any designated parking areas, fire lane, or public right-of-way. Paragraph C, portable storage containers may be used for construction or remodeling purposes when a building permit has been issued for construction on the non-residential property. The portable storage container must be removed within ten days after the final building inspection or after the building permit is expired. Paragraph D, portable storage containers may be used for commercial, long-term, and short-term rental storage of goods and property, provided. Paragraph one, rental container is owned and rented by an agent or company that is registered with the State of Iowa and the City of Raul as a rental storage business and is bonded or otherwise insured for said stor- rental storage purpose, business purposes, as is necessary, and the rental container is located on a parcel owned by the agent or company, and the rental container is located so that it is not placed upon or in front of the parcel in a fire lane, in a public utility easement, or in a public right-of-way, including streets, alleys, sidewalks, and parking strips. Paragraph one fifty-four oh five, stacking. Portable stacking, excuse me, portable storage containers may not be stacked above the height of a single container, and the stacking of any other materials on top or around any storage containers shall be prohibited within city boundaries. One fifty-four oh six, good repair. Portable storage containers must be kept in good repair and be secured against unauthorized entry and comply with any state and local health regulations. Paragraph two, under good repair. A portable storage container is not, is not in a state of good repair when it is incapable of being moved and packed, contains holes in the container due to damage or rust, cannot be secured against any unauthorized entry, or has become infested with vermin, insects, or other pests. Paragraph three, portable storage container that has deteriorated and is no longer in a state of good repair must be removed immediately. One fifty-four oh seven, residential use, a portable storage container may not be used as a dwelling or living quarters. A portable storage container may not be used for camping, cooking, or recreational purposes within the city boundaries. One fifty-four oh eight, compliance. A portable storage container existing on any property in the city on the date of final passage of this ordinance shall be removed from the property or brought into compliance with the provisions of this ordinance within sixty days of the ordinance's effective date. One fifty-four oh nine, conflicts. In the event that any conflict exists between the provisions of this chapter and other currently existing provisions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Raul or other ordinances of the city, the terms and provisions of this chapter shall take precedence. One fifty-four ten, violation penalty. Violation of the provisions of this chapter shall be deemed a municipal infraction pursuant to Code of Iowa, section three sixty-four point two-two, and subject to enforcement and remedial action as permitted therein. So, there are any, any questions about the content? All right. Section two, repealer. All ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, severability clause. Any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section four, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage approval and publication as provided by law. So given that, I would like to get a motion to approve the above sections, uh, that are read from chapter one fifty-four of the City Code of Ordinances. So, okay, Cox has motioned, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Jackson, section's it, so we'll need a roll call vote. Mickler?
No.
Jackson?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Aye.
Cox?
Aye.
Pratt?
Aye.
Four ayes, one nay. First reading is approved.
I got a question. Last meeting, some of us agreed at this, these tables here that if a, uh, a timeline and a diagram were provided by a resident?
Yeah.
That would be considered?
Yeah.
By tasking us?
It still will.
Huh?
It still will because we will entertain the idea of new types of construction, but for just storing it there for an unknown length of time, no. That's the intent. So if we get a timeline and, and that, we can reconsider that building permit.
Okay, 'cause this sounds like some of us are going backwards.
No, but what it is, is we're trying to nail down people that don't intend to do anything except park around there.
Okay, I want to make that clear for my own self.
All right, next up, recycling trailers, um, we talked about moving the recycling trailers down to the, uh, truck parking, and that was approved. Since then, um, there's been some discussion about, wouldn't it be better to have them more centrally located in the city, especially since we're gonna be taking the old gym complex down? So, since we are moving them down there, um, we can call it temporary, and then once the gym complex is down, we can make a, a final pad up there and, uh, move them up there towards more central, uh, location and put up the needed lighting and fencing and so on and so forth. That, something that you are okay with?
What's the timeline on school?
Well, we don't know for sure, he's gonna, he's gonna finish gutting it, I don't know that he's gonna be able to take down the structure this winter. If he doesn't get it gutted soon, and start knocking stuff down.
Maybe when we agreed with this, have a, a date set or no? Was it open like this or no?
You mean, as far as moving him?
No, as far as him being in school for now, does he have a timeline?
Well, he, he tries to have a timeline, but, you know, weather and all that, he's been doing the inside. I don't know when he plans to finish the inside. So, basically, all I'm trying to do is figure out, we wanna move him up there after this, after it's down and we've got all the landscaping and stuff done up there. Would it be a better, better idea to put it there where it's more centrally located?
Well, we got lights up there, we're gonna put a fence up there, we can kinda control it better.
Yeah, that's, that's the ultimate plan. So I'm just asking if there's any objection to that? You know, just keep it temporary down there until we can move them up here. We did have to get the stuff, we had to get the metal container off, away from the, uh, bank here, so we're gonna be moving that down there. And then also, we gotta get the stuff out of here as soon as possible so we can, I don't wanna take a chance on somebody getting hurt out here on the slope.
So we're temporarily moving it to the?
Truck parking.
Truck parking, okay.
So, nobody has any objections to that, we'll, we'll follow that plan. Okay? Uh, the next item is, we've been talking about getting a, uh, different pickup for the, um, our water utilities guy, the old Dodge is, it's, uh, seen as better days and it doesn't, we're not able to tow anything with it because it's light duty. And so, we put out feelers for, uh, a replacement pickup. Um, we just threw a, a number out there to, uh, try to go by, we need something less than thirty thousand. It'd probably be pretty good, we, we came close with the last one we bought. And, uh, we do need the capacity, so something similar, uh, uh, three-quarter ton pickup, um, and, uh, so that we get the capability to tow like the mud pump and, and things like that. So, how does everybody feel about that? Possibility?
We gotta get something.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll keep looking, and then, of course, once we identify something, we can do a more formal, uh, discussion on it. Uh, next item up is the building inspector, as everybody might know, Al Schroff resigned. Didn't give a reason, just turned his book in. Um, I contacted, um, Corliss Poppin, who's our previous building inspector, and he said he would be more than happy to take it on board, so. And what I would like to do is get a, uh, a motion to, uh, approve, uh, the appointment of, uh, Corliss Poppin as our building inspector.
I remember when he had told us to be the building inspector.
Do you have a question?
And I guess I have never looked that close on a building, like a sheet or whatever, does it state? Basically, the building project has to come to the council first before a building inspector?
It doesn't say that, they, they, uh, back in the...
So do we need to do some rework or leave?
We need to redo the sheet before we hire.
We, we actually need to, to, uh, do, redo some work on the building permit, or the, uh, that, that chapter in the ordinances, because it's a little bit vague in that area. And, uh, there are circumstances where advance approval could be made, such as scheduling, you know? So maybe just get some concrete poured now before it freezes. You know, I, I think that is within the latitude of the, of the building inspector, but it still needs to come for final approval here. But just for general, um, in the middle of the summer, I don't think there's a need to get on, on the, uh, to, uh, advance the schedule.
So we need to redo it then?
We need to look at the ordinance, and we need to look at the committee itself. But first, just wanna go ahead and finish up with the approval of the building inspector.
So we've got a motion for Corliss, I'll second it. Right? We have a motion?
Yeah, I'm just gonna track.
I thought we had, uh, we do it.
We do, but we still need a building inspector and you wanna add my business?
We need the building inspector.
Okay, then I...
So, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that later. Right now, so I've got a motion, can I go second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, we will appoint Corliss Poppin as our building inspector. Last item is the general obligation bond that I alluded to earlier. Um, this is one that we plan to, uh, I gave her, gave you a spreadsheet that shows what our current bond debt is, um, it would appear that with a new bond, um, we're not sure what the interest rate will be, but it'll be better than a regular bank loan, which we can't get anyway. We have one bond that'll be paid off, uh, in June, and then this new bond, if we take it on, basically, we will not see an increase in the cost, in the payments for the annual payments for it, it'll basically be offset. The new bond is estimated to be about forty thousand dollars a year, uh, for ten years. The old bond will be paid off, that's forty-one thousand of the annual payment for it. Next year, in twenty-six, we pay off another one, and that will give us another thirty-seven thousand dollars, thirty-eight thousand dollars a year that we will not have to worry about paying out. And, uh, so we, hopefully, we will reduce our debt accordingly. So we're looking at a ten-year bond, and... Ten-year bond at three hundred and six thousand dollars. So, in the end, it'll pay back with the interest and everything, it'll be four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it'll be a hundred and thirty-two thousand earmarked for ash tree removal. Um, there will be a, uh, we will reimburse the city for the cost of the asbestos abatement for the gym complex, and then we will also be able to go forward and pay for the demolition. Uh, we had a twenty-twenty-four street project down, down here at the, uh, post office building and going down to the Red Door tracks. We resurfaced that, we will be able to, uh, pay that debt, reimburse, uh, ourselves for that. Uh, the water meter project that we talked about, and then I, I put in here, uh, an earmark basically for the, the new pickup or the used pickup that we'll go after if we decide to do that. If we do not end up buying a pickup, we can still use that money for any preferred use. So, like I said, we're going through, or with a, a ten-year, at this time, a proposed bond is a ten-year bond. We have hired Sphere Financial to help us through this process, and, um, a bond attorney in Des Moines. And then also, uh, if, I have gone over to the bank to talk about interest rates. They can't really give me anything in detail. Uh, I would like to ask the council permission to add on a, uh, placement agent, who would work hand-in-hand in this process. They would go out and identify all the banks that would be willing to purchase this bond and then try to work and get the best rate possible. Um, that amount of work would be between six and seven thousand dollars for that fee. So I wanted to see if we could add that on there. Um, it'll make it much easier, um, instead of going sole source, we can go multiple source and find the best deal possible. We don't know what is in the tea leaves for the future, um, things look promising with the new administration coming in, but there's no guarantees that interest rates could go out of sight, so. go out of sight, so we try to get the best thing for our buck. So, does anybody have a problem with, with adding on the placement agent?
I want some clarification so that people understand. This ash tree removal refers to those trees that are on city property. I don't want people suddenly think we're gonna have money to take their dying ash trees down on their private property.
This is the best estimate I can give out of a tree removal company, um, because every tree is different. Uh, this will include the removal of the tree, rubbing of the stump, and the hauling away of the tree for disposal. Of course, we still gotta work all that angle out with, uh, DNR because they'd have a say in some of how this goes, but at least this is a first step to get the funding in place to take care of this. So, anyway, that's where we are, so.
How, what do you say rates down per year forty?
What's that?
What you said rates down to, per year forty thousand?
About, about forty grand a year, payments over ten years.
So, where, how, where we gonna come up with that money in our budget?
Well, what I'm saying is that we currently have five bonds. One of them will be paid off before this one goes into effect. So, it'll be a wash, we'll be able to
Forty-one. The other one is forty-one that's gonna be paid up on June first.
Okay. I mean, we gotta talk to Sheriff's Department yet, we gotta keep them on. I mean, I'm just curious where we're gonna
Yep.
For, because I mean, our last budget was, we, we, we weren't enough. People, we said we weren't agreed.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're
But otherwise, we still had to do these projects, we started doing these projects.
I just didn't realize the trees were a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
I, what's that?
I said, I didn't realize the trees were, I mean, I thought this bond was basically
Well, it would've been much higher had we taken out all the ash trees, including the golf course, which is another sixty. If we added those in, this, this would've been two hundred and forty grand.
Oh, yes, but the, the golf course, in, in theory, nobody's been able to find the, the agreement.
I, I get that.
It's not our problem.
I talked to the golf course board about it, and I said, I cannot justify taking city money to go out there and remove trees when we get no income off of the golf course.
I guess my thing is, I thought this three hundred and six thousand was for the school and not
It is.
Ashes, that was for trees.
No, no, it's, it's for asbestos remediation or removal
Yep, that's forty-four.
Ash tree removal, to pay, repay ourselves for this street project down here and to pay off the water meter lease. And to, if we, if we're lucky enough to find a good pickup, pick that up. So, we'll be borrowing basically three hundred and six thousand, paying back four hundred thousand. Roughly, this, this is all preliminary numbers. We will know more in another month.
So, you don't want any motion or anything?
No, I'm just making you aware, but I wanted the approval, if you will, to find, to hire a placement agent to help us get a better deal on the bond.
Where do you come from?
Uh, I do not know, I don't have a name or anything like that. They, I just asked for a rough cost to bring it to your attention.
So, what, what's
It could be less.
What, what are you figuring at six to seven thousand for it?
For them to do their service, in other words, find, they'll go out and pulse all the banks, find us the best deal possible.
Yes, thank you.
We can't, we can't do it ourselves.
Well, I
Lot of work.
I, I go over here and I talk to these guys, but I don't know nothing about this whole process to, to ask all the, the right questions. I don't know about the other banks, I don't, I deal with West Iowa myself, that's my personal bank. I don't know the other banks, Popeye State Bank, they have dealers, or Dodge, wherever, might be a Des Moines bank, I don't know.
And Spear Financial, they don't have nothing like that?
No, they, they are our municipal financial advisor. They cannot do placement work by law. Just like the bond attorney cannot do the financial, the financial, uh, management or the financial advisory capacity. This is all under law, we're just trying to follow the laws, trying to get the best thing for our bond.
Yeah, we're all fucked out there.
It is, it is. If there, if it weren't for the, the tree removal, we probably wouldn't even be going down, going down this road. But we gotta do something about these ash trees. And it's not as simple as telling the city guys, go out there with an axe and chop them down. We'd end up with a lot of problems or we need, we need special people to do the tree work. You got insurance issues to deal with, property damage, potential property damage, liability issues, all that, you need to do it the right way.
So, do you just basically need a motion to have a placement agent?
Yeah, yeah, I, that's what I would like.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second all?
Second.
Okay, we have a second all in favor.
Aye.
And I will contact.
And, or do we know, or?
No, I don't, I, I want more information, I want, what are you gonna do for seven thousand dollars?
Well, as I said, there are no
Well, he don't know, that's why he need to That's why, that's why he's not doing it.
Here's, here's, here's what our
I'd like to say, shit, I'm not willing to spend, I'm spending a hundred and thirty-two thousand by taking down a tree.
Here's what's suggested.
I like, so what's he gonna do, what I'm giving for my dollar? Well, he's going there for, where he's gonna get the money.
This is according to Spear Financial, who ours our municipal financial advisor. A placement agent may be helpful in getting us the best possible rate. It would be nice to know what's, uh, excuse me, um, they basically send out to banks in your area and also regionally, and really educate those lending institutions on the rates that should be given on a general obligation deal. So, they go out and they, they not only educate the banks, they find us the best deal. I mean, I, I don't know how to put it any more simple. Now, I can ask for a more detailed description of what they do, but that, to me, this is kind of simplistic and tells us what we need to do. We don't have to do this. But again, I don't feel comfortable going over here and just talking to the bank, and I don't feel comfortable on going to another bank to talk to them about it.
The placement agent could end up saving us percentages on that loan, and that could easily more than offset.
It was likely, it could come out of Omar's, I believe.
It could, you just never know.
We have four MAs and more than
Anyway, that's passed, so, um, I will contact and see if I can get more information for you and get a better feel for it. And with that, concludes business, so, I have a motion to adjourn. So. Motion to adjourn, uh, six, ten, second. Is that you?
Right.
I understand.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.